I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday morning, October 15th, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunt-Housen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Tom's left, Randy Spangler, who'll be taking care of us today. Good morning, Randy. My right, Commissioner Candace Payne.
Good morning.
Morning. Nico Hash, Deputy County Attorney. Good morning. And Roger Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. Good morning, Roger. There is a sign-in sheet in the front as well as agendas. Please sign in prior to leaving today so we have a good record of who's attended our public meeting. And we will begin. We don't have any consent action items, Mr. Baltz, so we'll jump right into item number three on the agenda, which is Resolution 2024-110 to create the Oleo Acres Rural Improvement District, number 2024-8. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today is the public hearing regarding Resolution 2024-110 to create the Oleo Acres Rural Improvement District to improve and maintain Brooklyn Drive. The proposed district is just off York Road, about two miles from the junction with Canyon Ferry Road, just before you get to Warren School. This is outlined in light green here, and it includes Brooklyn Drive, which just makes a loop there. The resolution of intention to create the Oleo Acres RID was passed by the Commission on September 3rd, 2024, after receiving a petition signed by 40% of property owners within the proposed district. There are 30 properties included in the proposed district boundary. The original Oleo Acres RID was created in 1995 to maintain the improvements on Brooklyn Drive. The improvements on this road, this is a gravel road, the improvements on this road have reached the end of their functional life and no longer benefit from annual maintenance. Staff held an evening meeting to discuss the condition of the road and recommended that property owners consider improvements to the road through a new RID or alternatively consider dissolution of the RID. Property owners chose to move forward with a new RID and circulated a petition throughout the district. Improvements to be funded by the district include the addition of approximately 1,214 cubic yards of gravel surfacing and watering grading and compaction of the new material. Financing of improvements is estimated to total $49,705. Each benefiting property owner is proposed to be levied a 15-year debt service assessment of $171 per year. The general character of maintenance includes snow plowing and sanding as needed, gravel maintenance, drainage maintenance, and other maintenance as needed to preserve the road improvements. Annual maintenance is estimated to total approximately $4,500, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied and assessed a maintenance assessment of $150 per year. The total proposed assessment is estimated at $321 per property per year for the first 15 years, and then dropping to the maintenance assessment after the improvement loan is repaid. Upon passage of the resolution of intention to create the district on September 3rd, notice of the intention to create the district in today's public hearing was mailed to each property owner, and a 30-day comment and protest period was opened to the public. Legal notice was also published in the Helena Independent Record on Saturday, September 7th and Saturday, September 14th, 2024. The comment and protest period closed on Thursday, October 10th, and no protest was received. Therefore, there is not sufficient protest to bar proceedings today. If the Oleo Acres RID is created, it is anticipated that a resolution to levy and assess the RID will be brought before the Commission later this fall or early winter. Because we have missed the September deadline to get this on the next tax bill, this RID would be assessed starting with the November 2025 tax bill. In addition, we would also present a loan application to the Montana Board of Investments to fund an intercap loan for the initial construction. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2024-110 to create the Oleo Acres Rural Improvement District, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Good overview and presentation. Commissioners, questions? Bless you, by the way. Any questions, Commissioners?
I have a question. Is, I'm looking at, this is a gravel road. Is the Old York Road there on the northwest corner, northeast corner, is that a paved road or is that gravel also?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, you can see here, when I zoom in and turn on the imagery, you can see the pavement transition as you go from Brooklyn Drive to the Old York Road, and that is paved.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions?
I just, maybe to clarify, I was just talking with one of the landowners here. The process has gone through, you've got the 40% of the people to sign a petition saying they would like to have this. We have notified, there were notifications sent out to everybody. If the process were to be stopped, it would require at least 50% of the people to oppose it. Is that right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, so this, this area, Brooklyn Drive, has been part of a rural improvement district since 1995. However, the gravel is so degraded and is, is just not present any longer. You know, you lose about a half an inch of gravel per year. At this point, we do not have sufficient material to continue to grade this road, to continue to maintain this road. So we held an evening meeting with the residents. Everybody was sent notice to attend. I believe we held it, I can't remember exactly where we held this particular meeting. However, we sat down with residents and explained it's no longer functional to continue to collect a maintenance assessment for maintenance that we can no longer provide through this district. Options at that point were to recreate an RID if people wanted to, or to just simply dissolve that RID, and property owners could then maintain this road through the HOA or some other kind of private organization. We talked about the possibility of paving this, of some other combinations with a new improvement, but the majority of folks decided that it would be best to, to put a new gravel improvement on this, the full extent of Brooklyn Drive. The staff with the RID program created a petition for property owners. Once we create that petition, it's up to property owners to circulate that petition. They did so. This petition was returned with, as you said, 40% support, which satisfies our policy requirement of a petition that needs to be signed by at least 20% to, to return it and begin this process. This information was put into a resolution of intention to create the district, which was passed on September 3rd. And when this passes, we open that, that 30-day comment and protest period and send legal notice to all proposed benefiting properties. It also must be published in the Helena Independent Record. That period has to be open for additional time. If a holiday occurs during that time, we have to add two more days. So that legal notice had all of the details of this district. It also had today's public hearing information included, and also included information on how to submit protest, written protest, to the office of the clerk and recorder. That period has closed, and now we, we hear protests today. Because there was no written protest submitted, I don't have anything to present to you, but there's certainly maybe public comment today. If greater than 50% of the proposed benefiting properties submit protest, by statute, this process may not move forward for at least six months. If less than 50% is received, it's up to the Commission to decide whether or not to create the district today through the passage of this resolution.
And you receive no written protest at this point?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, that's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I was going to ask you to go through all that stuff, and you just, you just did it. So I don't have, I just want people to really understand the process, that this isn't much a top-down deal as a bottom-up. Folks want service on their streets. We've helped to lay out options about how that could happen, and this is the option that has been presented in terms of the petition and all of that. And the 40%, just to clarify on that, we have a internal policy that we don't want to, we don't want to move forward with this process. It's, it's a lot of work for you. It's a lot of work for staff and the folks out there. Unless 20% or more of the people in the neighborhood want us to pursue this process, we typically don't. And in this case, it's over 40%. So that's why we're pursuing this process. And it takes, there's three steps, as you just described, the initial that we, we did September 3rd. This is step two. If it moves forward, then we would move on to step three, which would be actually levying and assessing, and that wouldn't be on taxes until fall of 2025.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. Each RID must be levied and assessed prior to the first Monday after the 1st of September each year to get on to the next tax bill. So we've missed that deadline this year. This would start in November 2025.
Thank you. Just making sure we understand. Commissioners, any further questions?
One more question, if I might. These folks were already being assessed something for, for, how much were they being assessed before? Do you recall?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, they were being assessed $90 per property per year. However, I can say that this would have been a district highlighted for an increase to that assessment. Our grading costs over the last about two years have doubled, just with inflation, materials, fuel, items like that. So we have seen a large increase in the cost to maintain our gravel districts. So while it was $90 for many years prior, it's certainly $90 would not be sufficient to maintain a gravel district, even with new gravel. So increasing that maintenance assessment alone to at least $150, as we've proposed in this new district, would be required. So the $90 would, would not be sufficient today to maintain this gravel district.
So again, I guess if they were already paying 90, and now that it's being moved to 300 and, what was it?
21.
A total of 300 and something?
321.
321, so it's an increase of 231 rather than the full 331.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And the, just to clarify that as well, the 150 is the maintenance part of it. The, the other portion is for new, new, a new, new project, new materials.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. So the $171 per year would go towards repaying the loan that would be taken to regravel this entire road. The 150 per property per year would be used for the annual grading, for the snow removal, for, and to ensure that culverts have proper drainage, things like that, too, to ensure that the improvement that goes on to this road can be maintained for the life of that improvement.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this time, Commissioners? You'll have further opportunity. All right, this is a public hearing, so we would like to hear from the public. Those interested in making comment, like come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you're welcome to give us feedback, please. So it is open time for public comment on this item. Any public comment on the Oleo Acres Rural Improvement District? Any public comment? Going once, going twice? Okay. No public comment. Commissioners, any further questions? If not, is there a motion on this resolution?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-110 to create the Oleo Acres Rural Improvement District, number 2024-8, as explained by Ms. Makas.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
And I think it's pretty clear that they've gone through the, the process, and with 40% of the people you know, already having expressed a positive, then I think this, this has been handled properly.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I would just say kudos to the folks that live there. Thank you to Jessica and the team here. Folks stepping up and taking responsibility for their neighborhood and the street in front of their home. That's how it works. And your general, I say this now and then, but the general property tax that goes toward roads, the county roads that we, that those, everybody roads, like Wiley Drive or Sierra Road, those are the ones we pay in our general tax that the county takes care of. But the streets in front of our homes in our neighborhoods typically are taken care of through an RID. And so when people step up and take care of the streets in their neighborhood, I always commend them for doing that. Thank you for taking that step. All right, Commissioners, anything else? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is a grant task order. HHS-E-CFS-00000468 Amendment 1 to the Lewis and Clark County Public Health from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. That's a mouthful, but.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Drenda Nieman. I'm the Health Officer with Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today, I have before you a task order amendment from the Department of Public Health and Human Services to Lewis and Clark Public Health. The purpose of this task order is to provide nutrition, education, breastfeeding support, supplemental foods, and referrals to community resources to eligible women, infants, and children up to age five years old. On average, we serve 780 families per year in our program, and we've reinstated our satellite clinics. So we travel to Broadwater monthly and Mar County quarterly to serve the families closer to their homes. This task order is an amendment to our current contract with Department of Public Health and Human Services. It extends the term to September 30th, 2025, and adds an additional $324,479 for the federal fiscal year 2025 operations. This is a task order, this task order is one that we receive from DPHHS every year to provide WIC services. The funds originate from the USDA and flow to the Department of Public Health and Human Services. And then DPHHS then gives them these funds to the local level for provision of services. These funds are included in our fiscal year 25 budget, and staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions for our Health Officer? Please. Mr. Payne?
Shutting off my little button. Um, Drenda, I, this service, the WIC service goes to, you send it out to Broadwater and Mar County. Do we, so that it will be closer to where these people live, I'm concerned about the people in Lewis and Clark County that live in Augusta and Lincoln. Do we, do we take the party to any of them, or do they have to come all the way into Helena to participate?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne. We do have staff go to our neighboring counties, and the state gives us a little bit more in our contract to do that. Our main contract is to serve Lewis and Clark County residents. We have historically provided services out of our Helena office. We reached out to both Lincoln and Augusta residents, and we do so periodically and ask them, where would you like services? And the majority of residents continue to say that they like to come to Helena. They, they come to Helena already for medical appointments and for grocery shopping. And so they're having to come to Helena for their, two, two times a year for their in, in clinic appointments is not a burden to them. The program is now set up to where they need four appointments a year, and two of those can be a tele, telehealth appointment over the phone with our dietitian. And so they're able to stay right in their communities and call into the clinic and then travel to the clinic twice a year. But we continue to ask, and the residents who participate in our program do say that they would prefer to come to Helena. We've offered to go up. We actually did go up to Augusta and to Lincoln several years ago, and it wasn't taken advantage of. So we had staff go up and, and no families participated in, in the clinics that we offered in the communities. So we do continue to ask, though, on a regular basis, to make sure that we're serving residents of those communities as convenient as possible.
Who do you ask?
The, the families that participate in the program.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So that, that's maybe interesting to some, how folks get identified as possible WIC families. So obviously, when they're having a child, so go ahead, tell us a little bit about that, how people get identified.
Sure. Mr. Chair, there is eligibility criteria for the WIC program. We like to serve women when they are pregnant and then their infant and child up to age five. The, the biggest eligibility factor for the WIC program is income. And so if they're Medicaid eligible or eligible for SNAP food program, they are also eligible for WIC. So it's an, it's an income-based program.
And there's referrals from local providers, I would assume, so.
Oftentimes, yes, we get OB-GYNs and pediatricians that do refer into our program. Many other partners in our community as well head start sends families our way. Our home visiting program sends families to WIC. So our, the referrals that come into WIC do come from a whole wide variety of, of community services.
And if I remember right, if someone is not engaged while pregnant at the hospital, there's even questionnaires that happen as folks come to have the birth of their child, and they get asked if they're interested, eligible, that some of that stuff's determined, referrals can be made there, is that?
That is correct. And actually, with our new universal home visiting program, we have home visitors that spend time on the, the OB ward up at, at St. Pete's and connect with those families directly and engage them in both WIC and home visiting services. So we do have our staff right at the hospital a couple of times a week.
Thank you.
Yes.
Further questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, I just was, I was looking through this on page two of the documents that you provided. There's a much larger number there on, under Section 7A. Now, line eight, it jumps from the 337, 710 up to 9,800, and then down in Section B, it just lists on page eight, almost 7 million. Is that the total amount that the, that is coming in through the feds to the state that's being sent out around the state?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Rolfe, that, that is correct. Those numbers are reflective of the funds that the USDA is sending the Department of Public Health and Human Services.
And then the smaller number is on page, on item seven, are the, is the actual money that's coming through to Lewis and Clark County?
That's correct. Yes, our total, so the amendment raises our overall total to $662,189, which is an increase from last year to this year of $324,479.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? All right, Commissioners, hearing no public comment. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve grant task order HHS-EC, ECF-S-0000468 Amendment 1 to Lewis and Clark Public Health from Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, as presented by Drenda Nieman.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the task order amendment as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Number five on the agenda is Amendment Number Two to Grant Award Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Ann McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing. Before you is an amendment, number two, to a grant award from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation's Minimum Allocation ARPA Grant Program. This award is for the Ten Mile Pleasant Valley Water and Sewer District, and the amendment is to extend the period of performance to March 31 of 2025, and also adjust the scope of work to add construction work, to do some road-based work from the entrance of the treatment site to the maintenance building and some erosion mitigation upon their Lagoon Number Three. So the first phase of this project was completed. That was to do some pH adjustments to the effluent coming out of their wastewater treatment system. There was some remaining funds, so Ten Mile proposed that they were able to do some of this erosion and road work. Happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. My question, just so remind, we can remind people about the minimum allocation funding. And we received, if I remember right, about 2.4 million, and that money could be used as match with money that the state received. This is ARPA dollars specifically for water, sewer, other infrastructure kinds of projects. Am I on target there?
Mr. Chair, you're right on target. Yes, it was just under 2.4 million dollars. That was specifically for Lewis and Clark County for water and sewer district, or water and sewer projects throughout the county.
So we asked out there, and several water and sewer districts, I think we, we had projects in Craig, East Gate and East Helena, this one at Ten Mile Pleasant Valley. We did a project in Canyon Creek.
Canyon Creek Trinity School, La Casa.
Casa, Grand. The, the well in Lincoln.
Yes. Uh, no, excuse me. That was a direct allocation.
That was a direct allocation. Okay, that wasn't part of these dollars. Okay, so anyway, that was what it was for, for these water and sewer projects. And it's just these, either water and sewer districts or communities in these infrastructure projects. It was specifically for these kinds of projects. Any questions, Commissioners?
If I might.
Yes, please.
If, if I understand it right, the funds under this ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, they have to be committed by the end of this calendar year and actually expended by the end of 2026. Is that right? And this is just formalizing that so that, that commitment to, to do that, so that we comply with that first portion of the, of the requirement?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, yes, so this award here is the minimum allocation funds that are coming through the state of Montana, through the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. It does have that same requirement to be fully obligated by the end of the year. This award amendment's not changing any of the award amount. It's, and it's already obligated to us through the, through this award. It's just changing our period of performance. It's extending it so they can do this additional work of the road work.
Right. They just need a little more time.
Need a little more time, and it changes it so they can do that, that road work from the original. Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Hearing none. Is there a motion, please, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move to approve Amendment Number Two to Grant Award Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, as explained by Ms. McCauley.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the amendment as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Amendment Number One to Subrecipient Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Ten Mile Pleasant Valley Water and Sewer District.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commission, good morning again. Ann McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing. As a follow-up to the item that you just approved, this is an amendment to the subrecipient agreement that the county has with Ten Mile Pleasant Valley Water and Sewer District. So the prior one was our grant award from DNRC to the county. We are considered the pass-through entity, and so now we're passing through those funds to Ten Mile Pleasant Valley. It's the exact same amendment changes that we just discussed. It extends the period of performance to March 31, 2025, and adjusts the scope of work to include this construction work. Staff recommendation is to approve.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners? I'm sure happy that you're tracking all this, because it can get, it can get twisty and turny. The technical.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I had some concerns about why are we doing Amendment Two and then Amendment One? This doesn't make sense, but of course it does. This doesn't make sense, but of course it does. You just explained it to us. It's absolutely clear. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, you're welcome. I have an answer for you if you want to know why they don't match up, though.
Okay, go for it.
So the original amendment number one from the grant award from DNRC to the county was a date extension. And that was because the original application that we submitted, I think it was back in the fall of two thousand twenty one, only went through a certain period, but it took so long to get the actual grant award that the state just did a an amendment number one nearly on the heels of us of awarding the original grant award. So that was what amendment number one from the state was. And we were able to capture that in our first subrecipient agreement.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, any other questions? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Hearing none, commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve amendment number one to subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Ten Mile Pleasant Valley Water Sewer District as presented by Anne McCauley.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve the amendment as presented. Further discussion, commissioners? Again, thank you, Anne, and to Carrie. You know, she's out there somewhere. And we appreciate her work on this. All right, commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on. We are at that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. So if you have public comment, just come one at a time. We'd like to hear your name and address for the record. We're it's not a question and answer or major discussion time for the commission, but we are listening to you. So we will hear public comment. Please come forward, those that would like to provide public comment, and you'll have the floor. Welcome. Is that a green light on there? There you go. There you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
My name is Max Eskelson. I'm a trustee at large on the Canyon Creek Rural Fire District. Now, last week, a small group of residents were here last week to talk, and Wendy Adams was here to to give you her redress petition that she has. I'd like to give some information on where we're at with Canyon Creek Rural Fire District. More just an informational deal, not asking them anything. I just want you guys to know where we're at. Seven October, by vote quorum, we selected a new interim chief, Jeremy Gilliam, which was previously an assistant chief with the Canyon Creek Rural Fire District. Shortly after he was brought on, we received a resignation letter from Jonathan Cunningham, the former former chief and his wife, Crystal Cunningham. After their resignations, we were finally able to get our quick response vehicle brought back to the station, which we had asked numerous times for. We have currently have a structure truck at Wendy Adamson's house in Fleischer Acres, which our new chief has asked to be returned to the station and has been told no by Wendy and her probationary husband, Will. With the temperatures dipping into the low twenties this week, there's a very good chance some of the lines may freeze on this truck. And once one line is frozen on this truck, it makes it inoperable because the pump will not hold the prime for water. We'd like it back to the station and get it into a controlled environment where it's supposed to be. Since the new chief has been appointed, we have had one volunteer come down and take the computer, claims it's his, no paperwork to prove it. Another volunteer has come down and taken both the monitor screens, the TV we use for training, as well as the laptop computer that the former chief didn't return. This individual now claims it's his and has let and was letting the department borrow it. Again, no paperwork to verify this. We have requested numerous times a password to access all of our programs, image trend for call tracking, admin, emails, Wi-Fi, Facebook. The former chief refuses to give them to us. We did get a TV and two laptops donated by Jeremy Gilliam and his wife, Desia, but we were having a hard time getting our programs loaded, et cetera, as the former chief made himself the administrator on these programs. So when we call, no one will talk to us. We also had a security system donated that was installed last weekend. As it appears, many items are missing or not returned from the previous volunteers. And they have made allegation that things were gone, have been gone from the station. The security system will ensure integrity of the department going forward. We are missing approximately fifteen hundred dollars in medical supplies. Thirty May, the former chief and his nurse wife, Crystal, ordered seven hundred and fifty dollars in medical supplies and another six hundred dollars last month. But when the brought when they brought the medical vehicle back, most everything was either outdated or unusable. Currently, we need fourteen hundred dollars in medical supplies to get our vehicle back up and outfitted just to respond for medical calls. If we were to get a medical inspection now, we'd be shut down. You're probably asking why we don't have a current inventory. We've asked the former chief numerous times for this inventory. It was due to the board in January. We've never received it. And last, there will be an investigation into possible HIPAA and privacy violations by Crystal Cunningham and trustee trustee Wendy Adams for going through fire members' personal folders, then filing a false police report on the missing records. They accused trustee Ellen Eskelson, Chair Rick Grady, and myself of removing those. None of us even have a key to that file cabinet. However, when we held the chief interview, some of the stuff that the opposing party said about appointing the new chief was word for word verbatim off the files they called in missing that mysteriously showed back up in two days. That's where we're at in Canyon Creek. We've got a mess. We're trying to move forward. We really are. But we're in we're in a stalemate right now. And I don't know, we've been in contact with Nico quite a bit. I have asked the sheriff department for help to retrieve the fire truck. And they've told me it's a civil matter. Well, actually, a deputy told me I've been directed from above not to get involved. It's a civil matter. I don't know how that can be a civil matter. The fire truck is a Canyon Creek Rural Fire District asset. It's sitting at someone's personal home, and we can't get it. We're down to one structure truck. We have a a structure fire down by the Canyon Creek store. We have one structure truck to fight with, and we have two assigned to us. We need both of them. So I'm going to be asking Nico today, we can get involvement with the sheriff to go and retrieve this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Commissioner Hunthausen, Commissioners Richard Grady, ninety three twelve Lincoln Road West, Highway two seventy nine. I am currently the chairperson of the Canker Rural Fire District. Everything that fellow trustee at large Max Eskelson is actually an percent correct. I have for public record a copy of our agenda for next one, the two pages of everything that we are working on to clean up and move forward. Nico Hash has been very helpful to me and Max. As a trustee at large, as well as chairperson, he represents the entire board. I also have my own personal attorney to take care and protect my family's assets. Cancrack Store is worth is listed today for two point seven million to be sold. What do you think the value of my family's ranch and everything is right now? Stop and think about this. Max is correct. We need to get that structure packed back tonight. This past weekend, myself and many people cleaned up the fire station. I mean, we cleaned it up. We hauled several loads of waste, unusable paper, whatever, to the landfill. We cleaned up the fire station, organized it so it's functional. We also installed security cameras that we've been trying to get installed. It's properly posted so the public knows that they're on twenty four hour surveillance. We now have access to the fire station, which the former chief would not give us access. My personal attorney told me I have a legal right. We have a legal right to that fire station. So I'm passing out the agenda. Nico is also has done greatly to advise his public comments. I have here on here, per his recommendation, three sections. Section, they provide public comment on each agenda item, section where they want to talk at large, and a section of non agenda items. It's fairly clear. Two weeks ago, I attended the Montana Fire Trustees Association. I am a member. Our association, our district is a member, the Montana Fire Trustees Association. You have two people in Lewis Clark County, Bonnie with Tri Lakes and Bill Wagner, E. Fowler, on that board. Kate Dean-Wendy, who's the attorney for the association, spends times talking to us. And she also has dealt with Nico and gave him high remarks as a county attorney. Okay, he deserves recognition. Okay, number two is I attended that conference and submitted my certificate as well as the agenda that was there at the conference. That agenda had our attorney, our insurance agent, Chris Hindon, talk about liability. Liability is a huge thing today. Talks about director liability, fiduciary liability, general liability, professional liability, malicious liability, big time. And one of the things he brought out, and this happened in our district about a month ago, one of our firefighters went to an incident and crossed a down power line. It's lucky that person didn't get killed. And it falls back for poor training. And the residents where this occurred on observed him cross if that power line, observed him. He went to the residents, says, what's the problem? He said, don't you understand that you just crossed a down power line? I have submitted a letter when I was the fire chief back for you for public record. It was dated April fifteenth, nineteen ninety four, which I was recognized by the Montana Power Company for my duty and safety of the power company alignment and the firefighters. I submit that in the record. And when Ms. Connie Horner last week makes a public statement that I'm not mentally capable, or Jeremy Gillman, she is one of the many people that goes to every meeting and says the same thing over and does not get the facts. I have the same people get up and do not follow the three minute rule. Nico has advised me to make sure it's three minutes. It goes beyond three minutes, I gotta give everybody opportunity. And I constantly pound and pound my travel. Your time is up. As Nico says, wear my body armor, which I do. I'm in a very tough situation. Last meeting, Wendy and Jim Thomas got up and started to recall that redress petition, speak for themselves, not this board, and interrupted me as the chair and took over the meeting. I don't think Commissioner Hunthausen, you would like the other commissioners take over the meeting today. I don't think that. That's not how it works. We're not do that. That's they so they violate the open meeting law. They violate the punctual participation. They violate it. And she's the same person, Wendy, who comes to me and others that you're not following the law. Nico has had the opportunity to attend our meetings. I invited him to come there to observe the community. He's been there. And continually, again, I just cannot emphasize how important it is. He's helping us. How important? We gotta get that truck back. My dad served eighteen years in the legislature, House Representative. One of the things that he taught me that state capital belong to the people. This chamber is belong to the people, and those assets out there Canyon Creek belong to the people. It's their pay and the taxes. We have a hundred thousand dollar budget. We have money to support Mr. Gillman to get the stuff replaced. He needs radials. We got two trucks we gotta get fixed. We're taking we're as trustees, we're doing everything we can, ensure stuff is ready to respond. I thank you for your time. And I thank you for allowing me to present public comment, and I'll submit my documents.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Appreciate you being here today. Other public comment? Welcome.
Good morning. My name's Jeremy Gillam. I am the appointed interim probationary chief for Canyon Creek. That was on October seventh. I'm not going to stand here and say this person said this, that person said that. I haven't met Nico. Nice to meet you, Nico. But I am going to say I want to move forward. My wife's family, sorry, has been out in Canyon Creek six generations with my son. He's fourteen. He is the longest generation in the Canyon Creek School. We've had six generations there. I take a lot of pride in that community with my family. However, yes, there are issues in any district, anywhere. We're all humans. We we have to respect each other and move forward. We're not going to always get along. I had a meeting last night with Birdseye and Canyon Creek's fire chiefs and assistant chiefs. I asked them if they would meet with me. We went down to Birdseye, to Fire Hall, and had a barbecue. They presented it for me. We just sat down and discussed. We're moving forward. I asked them that, because I've heard in the past that in the past trustee meetings that supposedly from community members that the chief said they won't be doing mutual aid with us, auto aid. However, that is untrue. They were encouraging me that they will come to any call for auto aid. If I'm there, if I'm not there, if we're at our district's down or whatever, they're there to help support all districts. I am also, we had they had some concerns, which is with everything going on in the papers and everything, I agree with them. Hundred percent. I would have if I was in their shoes, I'd have the same concerns. We discussed it. We worked them through. So all three districts are covered at all times. Birdseye has a ton of medical staff. Marysville has a lot of good firefighters, and now with Canyon Creek, as I'm the interim probationary chief, I'm also an EMT. I've also been on ski patrol for many years and an instructor. I, like Mr. Grady said, I have been the assistant chief for Canyon Creek for a few years. About six years ago, I was also the assistant chief for Marysville. I know the district very well. I know fire. I've gone through multiple trainings, not only for firefighting, EMT, but I also went through assistant fire assistant fire chief and chief trainings that were presented at that time. I just, I want to move forward with this. I understand that me members are not going to be happy. I want to prove to them that, yes, I'm here for the community. I did have, once I became point in chief, we had seven people of the community give me their applications. They gave them prior to me becoming the chief with the prior two chiefs. They never accepted them. These people that these community members that did accept the, I accepted their applications. Two of them are, one is a nurse, another one is graduating her nursing degree in December. They both want to be EMRs. My wife, prior member of the Canyon Creek Volunteer Fire Department, also an EMT, applied. My father in law applied, used to be a volunteer firefighter. Another member just drank down the road that quit a few years back, reapplied, also a volunteer firefighter. We have people coming out of the community that have fire experience and medical experience that want to be on this fire department that were never given the opportunity. I'm given that opportunity. I have five others. People have given the application to you that are very interested. Hopefully, within the next month, we'll have fifteen firefighters on this fire department that are willing to go to calls and medical calls. This is the most Canyon Creek has ever had in the twelve years I've been in Canyon Creek right now. So me personally, we're moving forward in this community. We have people wanting to respond, come to trainings. We had probably close to ten fifteen people the last three days. We spent over eight hours down at Fire Hall in the last three days cleaning it, mowing the grounds, getting it ready for winter, cleaning the trucks, and then starting the inventory. And I have other members that can't be on the fire department due to medical conditions or whatever. They just don't want it, but they want to help in the community. They're advising me, saying, give me a call. I'll come down and help with inventory, write stuff down and everything. So we do have the participation, and I want to keep that momentum going forward. I just want to let you guys know that there's always, like we talked earlier, there's always three sides to a story, the truth, in my opinion, his side, her side, and then whatever comes to the facts in the middle. And right now, I would like just to have you guys hear what the other side's seeing. You guys have to make the decision or fill what you want between the two facts and the stories coming together. But right now, we have a good district going on right now, and I want to keep it moving forward. I don't mind if they talk bad about me or whatever. If that's their their opinion, we live in America. I mean, you guys know, you probably have people talk bad about you. They don't like you, voting you in. So it's just something that we have to deal with, and I want to still work with them. I'll still go to their house. So it's just something that we have to deal with and I want to still work with them. I'll still go to their house if they call for any medical or fire. I'm not going to slow down the process or anything. Their lives are just as important as mine, my family's, or anyone else's. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your public comment. Is there further public comment? Any, any further public comment? Anyone else? Okay, commissioners, uh, we will close public comment and thank you for a very good meeting and we will stand adjourned.